March fourteenth, twenty twenty, suspending in-person open meeting requirements. All public meetings will be closed to the public at this time. Public meetings will be available on Zoom, and they are. Okay, the first item on the agenda is roll call. Clerk Patrick, please call the roll.
President, our mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Guinevere Depot, councilors Lisa McCabe, Reginald Stanford, Stephen Sheffield, Jod Carter, Clerk Deborah Patrick, and Finance Director Ron Yuhas.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with referrals. The first one is number one appointments. Pete Burns, the third, to the Board of Ethics. We have, we have two openings in the Board of Ethics. Rob Zulliani and Jackie Massett have to step down because according to the charter, you can't do more than two consecutive four-year terms. So that opens, opens them up. The first one that we're going to fill, fill is Pete Burns for tonight, and his resume is in front of you. And I guess we'll open it up to any questions that the board may have, that, excuse me, that the council may have. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, less of a question, more of a statement. I don't know Mr. Burns personally, but I know a lot of people that know him, including some of his family members. And I've always heard great things about him, and I also just want to express our gratitude because the Board of Ethics is not something that everyone, in my opinion, qualifies to be on. So finding someone who is qualified and will, you know, serve the city well is sometimes a feat. So I just want to say thank you to Mr. Burns for volunteering to be on the Ethics Committee.
Well, I know Pete, and I can vouch for his character. When I left AECOM, I turned over Operations Manager to Pete and the C, uh, Security, the Security Manager over to Pete as well. So, you know, that's, that's pretty much all I'll say. Any other questions or comments on, on number one early appointments? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to move that to the Mayor and Council Meeting of February first, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Deputy Mayor Depot, second with Counselor McCabe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. The next thing that we're going to talk about is seven seventy-three, which is, uh, let's see, is Mary here? Okay, Mary's here. Parks and Recreation. I'm gonna, I'm gonna open this up to Mary. The first one is the Al Recevo Gate House. Mary?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for letting me come on behalf of the Beach and Parks Committee to present some things to you this evening. The first thing we have is, um, we had a request from TJ Restivo, who is Al Recevo's son. Upon, obviously, uh, we all know that Al resigned from the Beach and Parks Committee in early October due to the relocation out of the city. Um, he, he had thirty-nine years on the Beach and Parks Committee, of which thirty-five of them, he was our chairperson. The request from the family was to rename, or not rename, but to name the gatehouse at the entrance of the beach after Al. There's a personal connection with the gatehouse, and Al, his daughter, actually designed it and was the architect behind, the design of that new gatehouse. I'm not sure if anybody remembers what the older gatehouse looked like. It was just pretty much a square box with two doors, but so we, we enhanced the gatehouse. The requests from the family and the recommendation from the Beach and Parks Committee for you tonight is that we named the gatehouse after Al.
Open it to the council for comment. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, I just want to say, I think this is a great idea. I think, because I was trying to think, yeah, our gatehouse doesn't have a name. So I think it's a good idea to name it after someone who's given a lot back to the beach in particular, but the community. And, um, I think it's nice, you know, when you go to the beach, people know the Z House. They knew, know who Steve Sverski is, like, you know, that's really, a really nice thing. So now when people pass the gate, they'll be like, oh, I knew Al. I, you know, used to see him during the summers here, whatever. I think that's a great addition to the beach.
Other comments from the council? Counselor Carter?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Carter, we'll go with Counselor Carter first.
I think Mary has, Mary, want to go ahead, Mary? Uh, Mary, I think she has some, does some urgent?
Well, I do want to let you all know, I will be going to the Eastern Point Historic District because signs are part of their application process. I don't think it will be an issue since we already have two other buildings already named, but it is a step that I will have to take if we move this forward.
Okay. Counselor Carter?
I, I just wanted to add on to what the Deputy Mayor said with, I, I think, I think it's important also to, um, to show members of our, of our community that if you, um, if you give what you got, it will be recognized, you know? So just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you. Any other counselors? Any hearing none, I need a motion to move this to Mayor and Council Meeting of February first, two thousand twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Depot, seconded by Counselor Sheffield. Is there, are there any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, the renaming of the baseball field and press box. Mary?
Okay, so this one's a little unique. Um, we had a request from one of our actually committee members, who's all, who's been involved with Little League for twenty-five years, Bill Borsowitz, in regards to naming dugouts, um, on the Little League field under, um, for Fred Hahn, who recently passed away, whose son played baseball at the field, who, um, Fred continued to support Little League and Babe Ruth, even after his son had moved on from the program. The cha, the request was made then at the meeting that we had last week that we made, named the field, and I say field, I feel number three, which is our Babe Ruth Avery Point Field. Through discussion of having a, a field named after Fred, there came about what would happen if we slighted somebody else, or somebody else who might have done some more, was involved our community in a, a, a level higher. Um, and so the discussion came about that the, the committee would like to name the field three after Roger Bidwell, who had thirty-six years of coaching at Avery Point Baseball. Um, the field was the Avery Point Home Field, so a lot of college, you know, student athletes played on that field. A lot of student athletes moved on to bigger programs and some have moved on to the major leagues. So, uh, the Recreation, Parks and Recreation Committee, or Region Parks Committee, would like to, uh, name the field after Roger Bidwell and the press box after Fred Hahn. Now, having reached out to both of the families, there is a very strong connection between these two individuals. Roger and Fred were very close friends. Uh, Roger was with Fred, um, his last days. Fred did pass away recently this fall. So it is something that is a nice collaboration, and the recommendation from the committee is that the field be named after Roger and, uh, the press box, obviously, the current one is going to be replaced and repaired, so it'd be a better condition once we, um, in, in the future, but, uh, the press box after Fred.
Comments from the council? Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I mean, I'll just chime in. Um, I didn't know either of them. I didn't play Little League. I didn't have siblings that played, but, when Fred passed away, I know the outpouring online of a lot of people that I knew, um, including Counselor Carter, talking about their relationship with them, and I feel the same way that I do about the gatehouse. I think it's a great tribute to them, and I'm sure it's nice for people who did know them when they go there to, to say, oh, I, you know, that guy was my Little League coach or whatever. I think that's a really cool, um, tribute, so.
Great. Anyone else? Counselors? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say, uh, sorry. Abstention, motion carries. All right, the next one is Eastern Point Beach Concession Contract. Mary?
So, uh, recently, this month, we received, uh, notification from Groton Public Schools Food Services, um, that they would like to come back this, um, upcoming summer to run the concession stand. Um, I, I do believe Ernie's on the meeting with us too, if, um, anybody has, if he wants to add anything, but they are asking them to come back. Um, there is, there is consideration to if we could, you know, keep the, the rent at eleven hundred. I know there was a discussion last year because it was supposed to go up to fifteen hundred. I don't know if Ernie wants to address that in any length in regards to what their rec, their request is, but, um, it's time to read, see if we want them back at the, at the concession stand at the beach.
And let me open this up by saying, last year, we did not have concessions at the beach. I was concerned about flow control and the ability to distance in, uh, both outside and inside. And, uh, Mary and I have talked, and Ernie and Mary have talked about, uh, flow control. What we'll do now is we'll bring people up the back ramp and come in that way and serve instead of there being a choke point at the top of the stairs, and people will exit down the stairs. Uh, therefore, we won't have a choke point right there. That'll be a problem. Because there is a possibility that we will still be in COVID controls or some form of COVID controls for the next, next beach season. I'll turn it over to Ernie. Ernie, do you want to talk about your preparations and plans and what you're trying to do to help, uh, deal with the COVID issues?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, hello, counselors. Um, so yes, um, Mary and I, um, we've been tossing around some, some good ideas, and we really don't know what June is going to look like. We can only, you know, assume, but I also want to try to keep my staff as safe as possible. The workers in there, it's a very tight space. Um, we talked about the flow on the, uh, up on the deck, having folks come up and, and egress down a certain way. We've talked about possibly limiting the menu, um, slightly so that we can move folks quicker, so there's really no wait time. Um, you know, keeping obviously the most important and popular items. Um, so again, we, we have talked about, you know, and, um, having safety measures still in place to some degree. And like I say, we're willing to, to work with, um, you, Mr. Mayor and Mary, and, uh, anyone that we have to, to make this work, because I think, um, we're ready to get back to some type of normalcy this summer.
Sure. The issue about the eleven versus fifteen hundred, where are you with that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Mr. Mayor.
There was a, there was a question regarding the eleven hundred versus fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, where do you stand on that?
So, um, we're, we're asking the council to consider, um, for another season, to keep it at the eleven hundred. Due to, we have to put in a few more. Um, obviously, we're going to have more expenses with, um, safety protocols. We're looking at the potential of, uh, possibly paring down the menu a little bit. You know, in limited, uh, traffic, um, coming in. So it's going to generate less, less, um, sales, if you will. So that was just our reasoning with that. Um, I know my superintendent, Mrs. Austin, and our facilities director, we've talked about this in length. So that was some of our, we're just trying to minimize our costs as, as much as, as possible.
Okay. I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Sorry. Um, we just, okay, uh, we discussed this at length last year, and, um, I just want to say, I know we aren't involved in the public school, um, decision-making or any of that, but I do just want to say thank you to Ernie. He's involved in, you know, making sure that the kids in our community are fed. And the, despite all of COVID, they've been doing an admirable job trying to get food into homes and help, um, subsidize the cost of kids being home instead of at school. So, uh, I just want to say thank you for that, and I, you know, we do see it here, even though we don't get to make any of those decisions, but, um, I, I just want to say, I, we went through last year, asked a bunch of questions of, of Ernie and, um, you know, how, to kind of learn how the operation works, because it was the first time I know that I, uh, was able to get the, the details of how, how it works inside the, the beach related to the rest of the food system and all of that. In my opinion, I think if discounting the rent four hundred dollars makes it so that more people can save and pay less for food at the beach, you know, four hundred dollars isn't going to break the city, and in my opinion, it's a community service that we can keep the rates so low at the beach concession stand. So I'm all for keeping it at eleven hundred dollars if that will help with that mission.
Okay. Uh, Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, I'd have to concur with, um, the Deputy Mayor. I, I agree. I think the revenue probably will be, um, down a little bit, just in terms of people coming to the beach and, and having a smaller menu, as well as having to probably provide your workers with, uh, the PPE, just, just to do their jobs. Uh, I agree, eleven hundred certainly seems, uh, reasonable, and, um, I don't think we should, uh, go to the fifteen hundred.
Okay, any other counselors? Or are we? Comments from other counselors? Okay. Counselor Carter?
Yeah, I, uh, sorry. I wasn't going to say anything. I know we have a lot. I was going to speed it along, but I just wanted to, um, welcome, uh, Ernie back. Last week, when I heard that they were, he requested to come back, I was happy, you know? I, I think that's something that we can continue on, and I, I really hope a long-term contract could come about with this, because I think the important thing is that it's our own, it's our own kids that are, that are doing this, you know? So, you know, I appreciate you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so I need a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council of February first, two thousand twenty-one?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion from Deputy Mayor Depot. We have a second from Counselor Stanford. Any other comments? All in favor, Counselor Stanford?
I believe we did say this for the
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that. I got your text. I'm gonna ask that once we're done with this one. But I got, I got you. I know where you're going with this, so.
Right.
So we have, we have a motion, a second for this line item. Is there any other discussion for this line item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Clerk Patrick, could you go back and look and see if I took a motion and second for the renaming of the baseball field and press box? I think I voted before I got my motion.
I, I think you're correct in that. Um, I was, I was trying to understand. I heard voices, and I thought maybe I missed who spoke, and I was just going to go back and watch it.
No. Counselor Stanford, thank you very much for, for catching that, bringing that to my attention. So I want to go back to the renaming of the baseball field and press box and get a motion and a second for that to move it to the Mayor and Council Meeting of February first, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, moved by Deputy Mayor Depot, seconded by Counselor Stanford. Now that we have a motion and a second, now we'll vote. Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Counselor Stanford, thank you very much for catching that and for keeping me on my toes.
You're welcome.
There's nothing else. Mary, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much.
And, uh, this will be a good thing that we're going to do here. We're going to make this. I know that the concession stand was, was, uh, missed last year. I received, um, lots of feedback on that, and it'll be good so we can make this work. So welcome back. All right, thank you, Mary.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, we are, we are going to go to six fifty-five, which are the department presentations. This will be a planning and economic development presentation by Sierra Patrick. Sierra, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening.
Send your packets.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Just give me a second. Let me just make sure everything's up properly. Okay. So, good evening. Um, tonight, I'm here to just give you guys an overview of projects, um, to expect from planning economic development over the next six months. So, um, over the next six months, our objectives are to collaborate with community stakeholders in creating an economic um, future that really realizes the city's full potential. We would like to connect with businesses and residents to grow business and innovation ecosystem. We also want to enhance how people live, invest, and play in the city. It is very important for us to prioritize city investments to implement physical, social, and cultural improvements. We also would like to develop preliminary street scape designs that shape Thane Street, which is this picture that is before you guys, and also five corners into places where people can connect. And then it's really important for us to enhance the waterfront for it to become an amenity. Some key, um, action verbs I would like for us to take away from this, um, specific slide is the collaborate and connect. Um, the department really is going to need the community's expertise and creativity as we design these shared spaces, and then also for the local business community. We have a very supportive entrepreneur, um, ecosystem of partners that are local, and they are providing valuable resources, training, um, professional, just advisory services, and if any of you guys need that, um, connection or information, I recommend to either reach out to me and also to visit the City of Groton's, um, Doing Business in the City of Groton page. Um, that will provide some really great connections, um, there as well. So just to move on with our presentation tonight. So, over the past three years, we've done, we've updated our P L C D. We, um, participated in both a local and regional economic development strategy, um, strategizing. We've conducted a few assessments, a few workshops, and we also, um, ushered in the creation of the TIT Tax Increment Financing District. So we've done all this work. We've got back a lot of feedback from people, of what we've heard of trying to build a mixture of small local businesses. We want more open space, waterfront access, um, off-street parking, and, um, just concerns, obviously, with, especially on Thane Street, with vacant and, um, and blight, um, properties. So taking all of that work and all the information that we received, we would like to expand upon these, um, efforts and do some collaborative community engagement to further assess and develop some, some, uh, preliminary street scape designs. Um, our desired, uh, results are going to include a more pedestrian-friendly and bikeable city, um, addressing resilience and hazard mitigation, effective communication network to better connect and collaborate and inform citizens, um, visioning Thane Street in a parking management plan. So when we think about street scape in our exercises, we want to think about the function of our streets, but we also want to think about the aesthetics, the view of the street. So, um, this is not a street that is in, oops, sorry, the City of Groton, but I feel like it, it shows a good depiction of our scale, and maybe what are some opportunities that we can do with, um, our sidewalks, public, our, um, signage, and plannings and different elements, so how we can really create these spaces where more people can connect. Our aim is to really enhance our public participation that is within our planning process, and we want to do that, especially coming up on this year with everything that's going on, through some outdoor programming and some temporary installations. So moving the, these desired elements or projects forward, we would really like to do something over the fall, um, summer and fall seasons, um, with that programming and installations to help move these, um, projects forward and really engage the community members. I'm really excited that we're not in this on our own. We have some really great partners that, um, are going to participate with us in this process. Um, the COG actually is, um, leading the J LUS City of Groton Parking Management Study, which is going to be a significant help to us. I know you guys heard about that more. Connecticut Main Streets is going to be an excellent partner. Sectors right in our backyard. Thames River Heritage Park by Groton and, um, Southeast Culture Coalition. And I just want to point out, um, Thames River Innovation Place, and also the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for the funding support that they have provided for, um, us to move some of these projects forward. And I can't go out without mentioning Malone and McBroom and, um, Miranda Creative as the consultants that we are working with on specific, um, efforts within this as well. So, our community engagement process over these, um, coming months are going to, um, continue to identify and convene our community partners. We would like to prioritize, um, the ideas within each of those desired, um, groups and start to develop our execution strategy. We would move on to developing those street scape designs and then implement, um, phased installments. Now, how can you engage with us on this? I am probably going to be your best point of contact, or I am your point of contact for, um, these projects moving sort of forward. So for individuals who, um, I guess might not have a screen or might be calling in, um, once again, my name is Sierra Patrick. I can be reached at eight six zero four four six four zero six six. And also, you can email me at patricec@cityofgroton-ct.gov. Also, um, under the E D C, there are four working, there are four working groups that we have established. Coastal Vulnerability, Pedestrian and Bicycle Network Assessment, Thane Center Planning, and Thane Center Programming. Um, if anyone is interested in participate, in participating on those working groups, um, please contact me, and I will get you further information on those as well. Um, forthcoming, and what's going to be really exciting, is the actual outdoor workshops that we will be doing, so the participation in that, as well as some online platforms that will help us to engage in a safely-distanced, um, platform as, as we move forward as well. I invite all of the counselors to participate in this project, and I also request that, um, you guys become well-versed champions of the project. So there, you've got this presentation in your packet, and there is a number of slides, um, after this presentation that kind of goes into more details. Please feel free to, um, get in touch with me and contact, and we can go into more details of what some of those studies were and how we've come across, um, have come to this point, um, in our planning process. Now, to just give a overview of what some expectations are for each project. So for the, um, J LUS Parking Management Study is going to assess future parking projections, needs, and mitigation measures to accommodate the expected growth at electric boat and also our local economy. Um, we are hoping to receive both policy and management recommendations from this, um, initiative. For our Pedestrian and Bicycle Network Assessment, we will assess the transportation needs, preferences, and concerns using a variety of community outreach tools. We like, we seek to develop a map highlighting high, medium, and low priority improvements. And we also like to investigate some ways, wayfinding signage and tactical urbanism projects. In regards to resiliency and hazard mitigation, we're working with Malone and McBroom to develop a community resiliency plan, prioritizing infrastructure improvements, protection, and policies necessary for the city of Groton to budget design and implement in phases. Sorry, excuse me. In regards to the strategic communications, we are working with Miranda Creative to develop and promote the City of Groton, Groton's guided communication channels to connect with and help residents, but in businesses be more well-informed of what's going on in the City of Groton. COVID, as you guys have imagined and you are experiencing, has caused us to rethink how public participation and engagement happens on a city level, and our str, our strategic communications initiative, started before COVID, but it was like perfect timing because it's helping us usher in what new, sorry, what new, um, so usher in, I'm sorry, just got distracted with somebody at my door, um, to usher in all those voices and concerns that we have and to better connect, um, with people. I'm sorry, just got distracted with somebody at my door um to usher in all those voices and concerns that we have and to better connect um with people. And then visioning Thane Street, um I'm really excited about because we'll actually be able to engage community stakeholders in an actual visioning extra on a series of visioning exercises to really develop those streetscape designs and the programming for this summer and fall season. This slide provides um some milestones and timelines over um the next six months for each project. And I won't necessarily go into those in detail, but um that is just to kind of let you guys understand the flow. And then I just wanted to open it up to any questions um you guys may have in regards to these projects.
Okay, council, uh councillor McCabe, I saw your hand first.
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you, Sierra, for uh presenting today. Um, I personally um will definitely reach be reaching out to you. Um, I'm somebody who loves to take walks and runs around the city. So I think that um I would certainly be looking to participate in some of uh these groups. Uh, other five projects that you've identified and you talked about coming up with an implementation plan, um wh- when are we starting to phase those in as a timeline for what the milestones are, what the deliverables are, so that uh we can communicate to the community what what some of the things they're gonna see uh coming out of this?
Can you, I don't think I understand the question. Can you? I'm sorry.
Uh, when will be, when will be, we be starting to um actually work on some of these five projects? I don't know if you're starting with one. Are you gonna work all five in parallel? And um I'm just wondering what what's the timeline? You know, do you have, uh, you had milestones on that last slide that you uh showed. When are we gonna start working on these? What kind of support would you need from the community? Uh, how can, how can we communicate as city counselors uh and and be your ambassadors?
Okay, so um the initiatives are basically all starting now. The working groups will convene, will begin convening in February to um start to move those initiatives forward. And then some projects like the strategic communications and the hazard mitigation are things that we've already have a consultant on board, and so those are um already underway and and moving forward. Um, as we get more information or as as we develop the workshops in the online platforms, um, there will be more engagement with our online or our online cityofgroton.com will be the best way for people to probably engage with us on the projects moving forward. And I would um send out Facebook notifications and different things as such to inform the community on um best ways to engage and next steps.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
Kind of to piggyback on that, sorry, um, I wanted to say thank you. It's no small feat, I'm sure, to put these presentations together. And but I think that having them at most of the cows where we have this time is it keeps it fresh in our minds and, you know, for the people that watch the meetings, um, keeps it in everyone's mind. The thing that I was gonna comment is uh if we could have either a flyer or some kind of outreach on the city government Facebook page. Because I know people are paying attention that gives us something to share to the community page, like when you are looking for input, because there are so a lot of people who like councillor McCabe are interested in giving input if they're if, you know, run around the city or walk or whatever. And um, you know, the the easiest we can make it for them to give their feedback and so we can point people to a place, like when they say, oh, well, how can I help or I have this idea or whatever. I know that we can direct them to you, but I think it would be good if we had like a graphic, like some kind of infographic or something that's simple, you know, one, just like one page or one thing, but um but easy to pass around online.
Okay, absolutely.
Anyone, any other councillors? Councillor Carter.
Oh, yeah, uh, good job, uh, Sierra, on the presentation. You did, you did well. Um, I think that the uh, I remember last week I asked about the community engagement, and I think you answered all those questions with this uh presentation. Um, my hope, though, is that we we, we actually don't, don't drop the ball on this. Um, as far as attempting to uh get our community involved, um, I I I mean, I'm not a betting man, but I'm thinking that um more, more than a few people, um may miss this call in, you know, so I think, I think having us involved and our, uh, you asking us to be involved is key, you know? Um, you know, cause I mean, the the people I talk to, I mean, you you know, you you run into Cobham Farms, you know, the library or something and you know, they'll talk to you briefly and they'll tell you right there, and that might be their only opportunity to get any information back to the city, you know? So so I I think, I think we 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 really do as 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 council need to help her out with this because I really be remiss if um if our community dropped, you know, if if we didn't get that information out there, you know, as far as um you know, putting someone on Thane Street or this area that they want, you know, because it's it's for, it's for us, so.
Any other councillors?
Um, Sierra would um into uh getting going for economic in the city. Uh, I hope we get a chance to get together, uh, share some ideas. Uh, like I said, I'm I'm excited for to get something with the IFF project set up a couple of years ago and hopefully, again, it's uh the Covid pandemic and hopefully sometime bring or, you know, into the summer that we can really get things moving along. So I'm I'm excited to get invited. So uh, you again for the presentation and uh always uh, you know, interesting is from you and uh any other business people that want to do uh business here in the city. So thank you again.
Thank you, you're welcome.
And any other councillors? So I want to try to tie this together a little bit and answer and address some of the comments. So trying to uh reinvigorate Thane Street and other portions of the City of Groton have been tried for a long time, and we do have uh some challenges. Some of our challenges are uh some of the property owners that own so a a large portion of the properties aren't as interested in developing as we are. We're trying to work on them to try to get them to release some of their properties so that they can be developed. Sometimes you run into the uh issue if you talk to people about what do you want to do on Thane Street? Would you like to develop Thane Street? Some people say, well, we want to keep it quaint, which means no development. And other people say, let's just blow it up and start over, and I don't think that's the right answer. Uh, but the answer is somewhere in between. But one of the things that we've talked about doing in the past and we've had the opportunity to do, and we've done a little bit, Covid has disrupted it a little bit. But we have engaged the community to ask, what are you looking for? What would you like to see? And we're gonna continue to do that. One of the things that's that's out there that you guys may have forgotten about is that I'm waiting on the Connecticut Port Authority to get authorization to release the eight hundred thousand dollar grant to us that we applied for the ship Small Harbor Improvement Program Plan for the eight twenty-six foot docks down there on Thane Street on the uh Thames View Park. So once we get that money released, and that's been held up due to Covid, but once that's released, then that will help. Now, one of the things that I've said in the past and we've talked about is making, making Thane Street and making the City of Groton a destination location. That's the term that I've used. Sierra and I were talking about this on Friday, and Sierra has a broader view of that, which is to get people to come here to live, work, invest, and to improve our community and invest in our community to make improvements, large-scale, broad uh investment in the community. So when you talk about, sometimes when you talk about destination location, you think of Mystic and things like that, and that's like you go down there for a quick bite and then you leave. What we're talking about here is, yeah, you get some outside people coming in, but we're making this better for the local community. And we get the investors to come in to invest, and if people want to come over and visit and partake in the City of Groton, well, that's great too. Another thing that's important that that we're starting, that we started the last couple of years, but we're gonna continue on is the idea of resiliency. In the next thirty years, there's a projected twenty-inch sea level rise it along our coastline. So we have to look at how that impacts the waterfront, how that impacts infrastructure. We're getting the utility involved. We're looking at it from the municipality. We're also gonna look at it down at Eastern Point and Jupiter Point and other areas that are affected by storms. And uh, we had, we had a storm a week or so ago that caused some localized flooding down at Eastern Point. Well, if we're flooding now, imagine what it's gonna look like with a twenty-inch sea level rise. So these are the kind of things that we're looking at and thinking about as well. So it's all part and parcel. Sierra is the point person on this, and she has lots of ideas and a great vision, and we are going to move forward. So anything else for Sierra? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
We're done with this item. We're going to the city budget presentations. Who do we have here? Do anybody here from Highway? All right, let's go with Chief Spelman. Chief Spelman's here.
Mayor, this is Ron. I I I do have Heidi and Steve even with me. They had some issues logging in, so they are here in the meeting.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and start with with Chief Spelman on the police budget since I introduced him. We'll get the police budget out of the way and then we'll go to Highway. So Chief, are you there?
Yes, I am. I uh apologize uh for not having a video of myself. Uh, I'll have to go audio only tonight. Um, good evening. Um, as you are all aware, uh, for this uh service on the council, our agency presents a loaded budget. Uh, we do not have costs and other lines uh within the overall city budget. You get a true snapshot of the cost of policing uh within the City of Groton. Tonight, I'm presenting a budget that is in, you know, should be in your counselor packets, which presents a three-point-eight percent increase in a loaded budget format and an overall increase from five-point-three-four-three million to five-point-five-four-oh million. The increase is two-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars uh overall. Included within your packet, you're going to see that we're asking for a vehicle replacement uh which was cut last year uh and has been included into this year's uh budget, uh driving uh our uh want want up uh slightly. We're also seeking a detective vehicle, which I uh am gonna purchase used uh from another municipality. Taking that seventy-two-thousand-five-hundred out of that uh increase brings us down to a uh one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-two uh uh dollar increase, which is approximately overall a two-point-three percent increase with a union award of two-point-five contractually. Uh, that will show evidence to the council that we are holding the line in fixed costs. Uh, as you're all aware, HB six oh oh four will raise costs, uh, but this budget, we were able to take advantage of contracts already in place to hold the line on uh things that have come basically as unfunded mandates from the uh uh state of Connecticut. Uh, things along the lines of mental health checks and uh drug screens uh that we will have to perform uh on officers. Uh, we have that uh already uh in within our contractual services line, and uh we will be able to do that cost-effectively. Uh, we've been able to acquire equipment uh in, I I call them unusual revenue streams. And uh, we picked up the uh first deliverable will be body cameras. Uh, I, as you know, I follow very closely the uh the uh Police Accountability Group that that meets up in uh in in Hartford. And it was very obvious we were gonna go to body cams. We were able to get that on a JAG grant. Um, we were also found a C G S compliant cloud uh where our storage cost is low. So we've been able to hold the line on those costs by uh being ahead of the curve, so to speak. Uh, when you look at other municipalities' budgets moving forward, uh, if you had not gotten the uh the body cams ahead of that, uh, they're finding that that cost uh is significantly uh more than uh what we were able to get. Uh, secondarily, the uh card system that we just uh brought for the uh citizens-at-risk database. We're able to do that off a uh uh donation. Uh, you know, Jim Streeter had forwarded some money to us and we were able to do that on a donation and uh want to and uh and straight salary. The third one, I'm pleased to announce, uh, the mayor's aware of this, uh, today, we're in the implementation phase of the of going to the state radio system, uh, which will be a significant upgrade for us. It'll give a uh near two decades uh old request for interoperability, uh, true interoperability uh between uh Groton Police Agencies. Uh, and uh, we were able to do that on a capital improvement project uh that we acquired from the town of Groton, uh, which brought uh uh some of the money back to the City of Groton and allowed us to upgrade our uh uh our our focus. Um, it uh uh, we have done well with Covid. Uh, we were able to hold some uh some costs. We we had picked up P P E ahead of this. Uh, I I purchased it uh when the uh WHO declared the pandemic alert and was able to get it at significantly lower cost. Uh, secondarily, we had always maintained a uh uh a good stockpile within the city uh for use. Uh, and we took full advantage of uh three streams of it uh that were given to us from the uh uh state government uh and donations locally, uh, which, you know, our personnel were able to uh uh have P P E and uh and have it cost effectively. Uh, within your packet, there is one typo on the general support from the actual in twenty. That should read ninety-nine, not nineteen. Uh, in there, I apologize for that. Um, but uh, that should read ninety-nine, not nineteen. And uh, uh, I'll open up the uh floor to any questions individually on the budget and uh uh, it's a uh, uh, you can see from the uh the packet that was presented, we have held the line on uh on fixed costs uh within this uh budget over the last couple of years.
Thank you, Chief. Ca- uh, questions for the council, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, first of all, I, you know, I always say this about the police department. The chief has done a great job getting grants when we can and um saving the taxpayers quite a bit of money on many, many things. So thank you again for that. I have a few few questions that might be in the in the weeds a little bit, but um under general support on that line contractual services, is there some kind of, is there a reason other than inflation that's creating that increase of almost eight percent for current contractual services?
Yes, we we in in there, we catch legal fees, union negotiations, and we're going into a contract uh in in the coming future. Recruitment and selection, employees assistant program, employee wellness, uh, those physicals uh that when we hire someone new, uh, P Quad Hire Medicals, travel expenses, uh filing fees, any arbitration fees we have. And I did in uh include in that those lines the HB six oh oh four drug screen and the HB six oh oh four mental health checks. Um, these are actually low costs uh because we took advantage of existing city contracts. I would caution the council, and it's an excellent question by you there, uh, councillor Depot, and I would caution the council that uh uh we're getting into uh uncharted territory uh with that. You may see uh costs driven upwardly uh uh as a result of uh of of HB six oh oh four uh in those very lines. Uh, you may see that this is a line that uh has increases in the future where we've been able to hold the line in the past.
That makes sense. Um, under that same section, under a safety incentive, if we, if our actual for the safety incentive, i- is there a reason we're not expecting the upcoming year to match what last year's actually was for safety incentive? And part of that might be that I don't completely understand what that line is for.
I I I'll defer to Ron Yuha. So, Ron, are you on the line?
Yes, Chief.
Yeah, I'll defer to you uh to answer that. I think you can answer that far more eloquently than I.
That um, the safety awards is driven, and it's kind of hard to tell because sometimes the timing of that is a little behind, so that year-to-date actual may not be truly where it's gonna be at year end. I know Juliette, when she was putting it together, was kind of struggling with some of these things that with the timing of when invoices are coming in, but we can take a look at that.
Can um, can you kind of explain what the safety incentive is?
It's a program that um It's a program that is driven through HR, and it rewards our employees for good safety and encourages a safe workplace.
Okay, I, I mean, I assume most of that, but I just kind of figured it might be good to explain like what, why that cost is important because it's, you know, encourages people to stay safe at work.
Right, it's a management tool that is driven to drive down ancillary costs that you're going to get from employees assistants, should someone be hurt, workman's cost. That tool traditionally that you've used within the city of Groton has driven down those costs. And that's the line where it's, it's a, it's a good program. And it is driven out of HR, and it's in my budget because you've got a loaded budget presented in front of you. So you see the true cost of policing.
And then I just wanted to, I'm, I made a general observation looking at this, but it looks like the clothing allowance has gone up, which I would imagine that all the police officers have to dry clean all their clothes. And we have to give them an allowance for that. And with inflation, it costs more every year. I know that that's, you know, that is important, obviously, that our, our officers have clean uniforms. And I'm guessing that's the sole reason for that increase is just that the cost of cleaning all of their uniforms has gone up.
That is also a contractual item that was negotiated with the union, and there was a increase in it for those very reasons.
Okay, and then my last question, I promise. Under dispatch, it looks like our FICA tax, when, it looks like the, the, the column that says change in cost is high, but is that just because we underestimated what we would pay last year? Because it looks like the actuals are very similar. Or like the actual of last year is similar to the request. So did we underestimate how much FICA tax we would pay?
Yes, it was under budgeted last year.
Okay, so we're just straightening that out because there was an, because obviously, we don't have a choice whether or not to pay the taxes, but I'm just clarifying that it, it just was under budgeted last year a little bit. So we're correcting that this year. That's why there's a big jump.
Yeah, that is a correction, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Ron, am I moving this, is this informing only, or am I moving this to the next meeting?
No, this will be moved to the mayor council meeting.
Okay, then I need a motion to move the police budget to the mayor and council meeting of February 1, 2021.
So moved.
We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Depot, second from Councilor Stanford. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Chief. All right, so now we'll go to the highway, we'll go to the highway budget.
Hi, Council, this is Ron. I'll start off by kind of giving you a very brief highlight. And then Heidi and Steve were very instrumental in helping with this with the retirement of Tim. So they kind of got thrown into this. And so it's kind of their first time going through. So we'll try to keep it very high level. And then if you have some questions and want to go further into, we can. So the front page is just a summary page that shows the different breakdown of the budget between admin, fleet maintenance, roads and streets, snow removal, engineering and highway buildings. And that brings us down to just our total operating budget, and it doesn't include any of the capital. So you'll see the admin section has an increase of about 34,000, 33,500. The fleet maintenance of about 10,366, roads and streets 65,735, which is the biggest increase. The snow removal is down just under 12,000, engineering up 64, and highway buildings 292, for a total increase in the operating budget of 104,615 or 5.8%. The main driver in this increase in the budget is the, the union settled their contract after a little over a year or more. So the wage increases that were in there kind of drove the wages and then as well as step increases and promotions. The allocation of employees remains the same as it has in the past. There's no change between the allocation between the highway and the sanitation. So that stayed the same as far as FD, we didn't increase it, we didn't decrease it. It's truly just contractual and based on step increases for that piece from the wage side. The other piece in the admin that had an increase, which you saw the same in, the police budget was in the health insurance, which was roughly a 3% increase or 11,232. So between, between the wages and the health insurance, there was a couple of other small changes from insurance standpoints, but those were the two drivers there. When you look at the fleet, as we flip through the budget, you can see that on the fleet, fleet maintenance side, pretty much the main driver in that was the full-time personnel. And again, that was contractual with that increase. And then a small, small add-on for computers, which is the whole department has in there for new computers this year as well. So that was the additional thousand on the bottom. So we put the roads and streets. Again, the first line is the full-time employees, which was the contractual. And that also goes for the increase in the allowances similar to the, the police. The one thing that is in this budget that's new, and like I said, after we get through it, if you have a question on it, I can turn it over, is we did put an on-call piece in here to have paid on-call time, which is a $13,000 increase. And that's just something that we're looking at as far as, we already have some of that, but it's kind of a change, and we moved from one spot to here. The next big thing that'll jump out as you go through is contractual services for pavement, which is a $20,000 increase. And this is to outsource and contract for crack sealing and patch repair. And we'll kind of go into that in a minute as far as with the bond funds and how we are budgeting for road, road repairs. And the point of this here, and again, I'll defer questions when we get there to Steve, is to help maintain the life of these roads by doing this crack sealing. If we flip through, then we just had a small increase in the drainage section, which includes the MS4 and the testing and stormwater items related to that, which was the $4,200. Now, like I said, I'll skip the last two on the bottom that till we get there in a second, which is the capital. The snow and ice control, you'll see a decrease in the overtime of $10,000. We've taken the same methodology as the town does, and we looked at our last five years of overtime related to snow removal, dropped the high, dropped the low, and come up with an average. And that's why that dropped down to the 35 with the, with the mild winters that we've had the last couple of years. Everything else is, is unknown. So that's why the general supplies didn't decrease. We left that all the same. We are just in the beginning of the snow season. So we really don't know where that's going to fall out. In the engineering, again, personnel. And then you'll see some others, there's a decrease in the call time. Again, that was to move it over to roads and streets. And then just some minor fluctuations, ups and downs, but it all washes out. We go to the highway buildings, again, just a very minimal change. And this just has a change in the regular time, again, contractual, and then an adjustment to the FICA to true that up to, to actual, actually what the budget should be. So that's kind of the overview of the operating budget. And then when we flip back to the front page where we have the capital budget, as some of you may remember, we had bond funds issued through the town, and we would go to the town for approval for which roads we were going to pave. And we invoice them, sent the invoices directly to the town. They paid for them, and they were out of the budget process. That bond fund money was used up starting in last year's budget. So in last year's budget, you'll see that we had roads and streets of 244,000, which was the complete Benham Road. This year, the proposal is 332,430, and that is to do Mitchell Street. The other piece of the capital is the vehicles, which have always stayed inside the, the loaded city budget for highway. And you'll see that last year was as zero. The, the town decided that they were going to cut across the board vehicles through all their departments. So we went along with that, and we zeroed out the vehicle. So this year, you'll see that there's a $475,000 request for a vehicle. And that is to true up the request from last year as well, which was for a trucks, plow and sander, as well as a street sweeper for this year. So that's just to true up and get back onto the capital plan is the request for the 475. So which brings a total budget increase of 28.99, with the main driver being the capital with the increase of the vehicles of 475 and 88,000 for roads and streets. So that's the kind of a quick high, high view level of this budget. Again, I was trying to maintain the same level of service as we were directed to do. And if you have any questions for Steve, Heidi, or myself, be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Council? Councilor Sheffield?
Yes, Ron, how you doing? I guess if we have a light weather season as far as snow removal and all that, would the vehicles be necessary this year? Could we, you know, would we need them in the budget if, you know, if we don't need any additional, you know, storms that come in? You know, would you, would the 475 spent for vehicles be necessary for this year if things are quiet? Or is it something that's imminent that we need, you know, right away?
Well, this truck actually wouldn't even be in operation for this, this snow season because the budget would start as of July 1. And this is something that we were hoping to have on the road for this July season, but the decision was made to, to cut it. And Tim felt that we could patch the truck and get through another year. Now, Steve, I don't know if you want to talk to the trucks here?
Yep, that, that truck we're talking about is a 2004. You know, it, would it be possible, if, if we had to, that would probably be the one that, 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 right, if we had a light snow year this year, would it be possible to take that one off? Possibly, but we aren't talking about our snow stuff. And the other ones, a 1999 street sweeper. So that one's really on its last leg, too. So, you know, over three or four years, we were, we've been trying to replace these, and we were hoping to, but we'll see what we can do with that.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
So we, this budget goes to the town, and the town has to approve it, correct?
Correct.
Sorry, go ahead.
This and the police both go to town council, and then the police goes to the RTM as well.
So, um, what are the chances that we think they're going to approve that vehicle line? Do, do we think that there's a good chance they're going to since they didn't last year?
And Mayor, you can.
Yeah, let me, let me come in here. We really don't know. I haven't talked to John yet about what their philosophy is and what they're going to do. Last year, we wanted this vehicle last year, and they said they were going to cut their vehicles. And so therefore, we cut a police vehicle last year, which we added in this year. We cut the truck that we needed last year. And we're, we're basically saying, okay, we need last year's and we need this year's. So I, I don't know where they're going to be. We are looking at a strategy of, of where to go. If we get there and they say, you got to make a choice, we can look at that. I will tell you in the past that when the city has went, has made cuts and then went to the council, that was not rewarded. They cut us again anyway. And so, I mean, this is not a fluff to budget. This is not a padded budget. We need these two vehicles, and that's why we have them, we have them in the budget. So we will move forward and, and we'll see where we go with this. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I mean, I, I guess my, what I was thinking is we need to put a strategy together because I don't think that it's, not that it's got to be fair, but you know, this is a safety issue, obviously. And, you know, citizens of the city are citizens of the town, and the streets need to be cleaned. And I don't, you know, I, I don't know if that would be helpful to pitch it as a safety issue that, you know, we, we can't survive. What if, if the other truck we have breaks down in the middle of the year, we're going to have to buy a new one or do something? There's not like there's another option. So I'm, hopefully, that we can push them to approve this because it.
I agree. It's not like it's a five-year-old truck. We, we're going to go in with the stats on the truck, the year of the truck, the model of the truck, the hours, run hours, those kind of things on the truck. In addition to that, the street sweeper, we're going to talk about MS4 and the requirements that are being more restrictive by the state every year on MS4 requirements. And cleaning your streets keeps the debris and the bad stuff, plastics and everything else, out of the water, which is one of the things that we are addressing in one of our committees. And so this is part of that philosophy with the MS4. And you're right, the safety issue, we have a, we have a shed full of salt, but you can't spread it. You can't, you can't plow the road if you don't have a truck. So we are preparing our discussion and our arguments for them, and hopefully, we will be successful. We'll see. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to add one last thing. Thank you, Ron Uhas, because his explanation answered questions I was going to ask, so thank you.
Well, and, and one of the challenges that we face when we go to the town is, is they present a straight O and M budget, operation and maintenance budget. Our budget is loaded. So we have to strip out the non-departmental's so that we can do an apples to apples. And we also strip out the capital so that they can see where that is. And then I think we'll be okay. We've been successful with that strategy in the past, but we'll see. It's a new year. Any other councilors? Councilor McCabe?
Hi, thank you. I was just wondering if you could just tell me what the, under roads and streets, the contractual services for pavement? I'm just trying to understand why there's $20,000 for this fiscal year '22 and nothing in the, in the past years. Can you explain that?
So, Councilor, that was for, I think Ron alluded to it when he first started, is that is the $20,000 that's being included this year for crack sealing. It's not something that we've ever included as its own line item before. But given that the, the bond money is no longer available, we're looking at some, some opportunities to extend the life of some, some of our roads and streets.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from councilors? Let me look, I'm looking. I do not see any other questions, any hands. Hey, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 2-1, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Depot, second from Councilor Sheffield. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you very much, Heidi and Steve. I appreciate it. Ron, thank you. Please stay around. All right, Groton Utilities, 742. Do we have? There he is. Director Guday. We're going to start out with a strategic plan. This is informing. Oh, wait a minute, is this informing, or will you need them to vote on this?
Strategic plan is purely informing.
Okay, so the strategic plan is informing. I'll turn it over to you.
So about a, almost a year ago, right as COVID started, we had a consultant come into the utility. And he worked with the utility commission to develop priorities. Then we worked with all the supervisors across the entire utility to come up with answers. They may. They, they made their priority list. We also, um, reacted to all the comments that the utility commission had. And over the following six to eight months, we actually developed, um, this strategic business plan. And at the last utilities commission meeting, they, they approved it to try to, uh, center and focus goals for the utility. I'm only going to brief across, uh, breeze across some of the titles. Um, this, this presentation that you have was made, um, to be very public. And as we move forward, uh, Dan Boggs and the key accounts group and actually Noemi, uh, is going to work at presenting this, not only internal to make sure that it's, um, internalized by all of the utility employees, but also try to get it external, uh, across the city and the rate payer base. Um, so that, uh, everybody understands, um, what, what the utility is doing. So in the presentation, you'll see that the first section actually deals with just basically the history of the utility as related to the city. It's more very much informing. And then when you get to page nine, um, it comes to a mission statement, which the group and the commission thought, um, they kind of shot for something very simple. And it's GU, a premier, premier utility at your service. They didn't want to lose the at your service tagline. They believe that's quartered to the utility and they just, everybody wants us to be the best we can be, uh, within the city for the city. Um, the next basic area that, um, they had us concentrate on is what are the core values, uh, for the utility? And, um, the group came up with six core values. Later, you're going to see that they kind of drive some of the strategic priorities that we're going to discuss right after we talk about core values. But the core values, um, ended up being safety, customer and community, integrity, fiscal responsibility, infrastructure reliability and stewardship. Um, and there's going to be posters with these thoughts and concentration on this posted around the utility, uh, to help focus everybody in, uh, in, in presentations with the employees, uh, will be actually supporting all these things. Like one of the safety things we're doing already, which, um, is we're, we're starting a lot of our meetings and eventually all of our meetings will start with a safety moment across the utility. Um, so the core values flows into the, the strategic priorities. Those priorities are in each of the following pages, which are safety, customer and community. Sounds a little bit familiar. Fiscal stability, financial stability, workforce development, infrastructure reliability, regulatory compliance. And then the very last page, the commission made some commission level goals, uh, to try to help the commission, um, have a little bit of direction, mostly with governance and, um, you know, training at the commission level. But like for safety, um, the goal is to perform, uh, ongoing safety training in all levels of the organization. Um, goal two is to review and update continuously and continuously develop safety procedures. And then goal three, enhance reporting capabilities. Um, and believe it or not, underneath all of the priorities, which are safety and then the goals, there's actually sub-goals, which are, there's myriads of them. Uh, there'll actually be work scope, uh, in procedure driving for the entire organization, probably for three or four years, if not longer. Hopefully it internalizes all this stuff and we never lose ground as we move forward. So the strategic priorities are that safety, customer and, customer and community, um, financial stability, workforce development, infrastructure reliability and regulatory compliance. Um, I can talk more about any specific area. Um, what we're basically going to do is for each of those strategic priorities, there's going to be a rollout group in a concentration group within the utility. Um, it'll be similar to the way we developed these priorities, where we had different groups across the utility get together and talk about different things and get feedback from all the employees. Um, it'll be very similar in that we're now going to work on achieving the goals and the sub-goals. Um, as we move forward. Um, I don't want to make light of this, but I also don't want to keep you here all, all night either. So, uh, do you have specific questions?
Are there any questions from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, last of a question, but, um, I think this is kind of cool to have something to focus on. Um, like even for us, we, you know, we get presentations and it's, it's kind of a nice, I like organizational things. I think they're, it, it, nice things like that that draw your attention and then stick in your mind with, you know, the, but those kind of catchphrases to remember. So I, I really like this and I think it's a great idea to show it to the employees. I think sometimes we forget that, you know, the customer service level employees are, you know, not just in utility, just in general in business. Sometimes you forget that your, your employees need to know what you're trying to project to the rest of the world so that they can be a part of it. It makes it easier when they've also got, you know, this kind of focused presentation. So I think that's a great idea to do the presentations to the employees as well.
Yeah, this strategic plan is something that we've been talking about for a little bit. This is going to help us get the utility to the next phase. And, uh, I think this is a good thing. There's, there was a lot of work involved by the employees. And, uh, this is a good product and I think this will absolutely move us forward. Anything else from other counselors? Okay, thank you. All right, Ron, we're going to move to SCADA radio upgrade wastewater.
Um, this is similar to an item that you saw last month or the last meeting. Um, the SCADA radios are the radio system that actually talk to the wastewater treatment collection system pump stations. So, uh, at the last meeting, you saw, um, us asking for money to buy radios for the water pump stations that supply water to the entire distribution system. These are the exact same radios in the very same upgrade for the wastewater collection system.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, uh, um, on mine, it doesn't have whether it's an approved budget item. Um,
Uh, this is, um, what we did in the, uh, in the wastewater treatment budget is we did not approve any capital items. We left all the capital items and said we would bring them one by one to the council for approval as we had available cash. Currently, um, Ron might know right off the top of his head, but we, I believe we have more than a million, more than a million and a half dollars of cash. And we were trying to move forward with capital items that are of an urgent nature to get them done, uh, in, in that priority order. So it, it wasn't budgeted, but it was planned that we would ask for capital dollars to work on projects.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, um, I just want to, um, it's kind of a question, I guess, but kind of a statement. Had we not moved the sewer out of the tax base, we would have had to either not get this radio upgrade or try to get the funds for this from the general fund or from the electric fund. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to see that we're using the capital money that is dedicated for sewer improvements so that our sewer department is operating on a much higher level. I know in the past, we were unable to get projects done because it was always an ask and a potential increase in taxes or, um, what have you. And the way that we restructured it is already benefiting because we have the money to do this upgrade that's going to help us facilitate the wastewater treatment plant. Um, so I just want to say I'm happy that this is kind of moving forward. And I, I thought it was something like that, how we were going to approve them along the way because we didn't have a capital plan yet. So this coming budget year, are we going to have a capital improvement plan for the sewer department?
Um, that is, uh, we, we will be working on that as we put the budget together. Yes, the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the SCADA radio upgrade wastewater? Any seeing none? I need a motion to move this to mayor and council meeting of 2-1, 2021.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Depot and a second by Counselor McCabe. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Low lift pump station project, Ron?
Um, with my comments here, I'm going to deal with the next two line items. Um, what we are, this is a not, this is an unbudgeted project, but it is to solve a real life problem at the filtration plant. Um, as you may or may not be aware, during, uh, plant startup of the filtration plant, we had an eel migration this year in September and it almost shut the filtration plant down because eels got through the low lift pump station, went up into the filtration plant and actually plugged some of the brand new filters that weren't designed, um, to actually filter out eels before it got there. Uh, so the change in treatment process created a problem and that the low lift pump station was never designed to remove the eels at that point. In the old days, the eels used to get into the filtration plant, stay on top of large sand beds and be backwashed out to the backwash basins. Um, they, they had no effect on the treatment process. So we discovered we had that major problem in September, did some makeshift work in repairs with bright lights and some temporary screenage at the low lift pump station. Um, and then we're hot shotting basically an emergency capital project, which is estimated to be 473,000, which is the project we're looking for you to approve. Uh, inside that, it has engineering costs of 145,000. Construction costs estimated at 265, uh, internal labor of 20,000 and actually a contingency on top of that to add up to a total of 473,000. And then the next line item will be to ask you to approve us issuing a purchase order on that first line, which is 145,000 for the engineering to Wright Pierce to get this done. And as you'll recall, Wright Pierce is the, uh, firm that we've done a master services agreement with, um, for engineering services for the water company. Questions?
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, so this money is going to come out of funds we already have available in the water, um, account, right?
That is correct.
And where does that put us, um, for that account? If we use this, this amount of money, how much is left in that, that account? What's the balance of it?
Um, it's actually total cash on hand. Uh, I can't answer that, but it's probably well north of $1 million. It's, it's just a bank account that has all the cash reserves in it.
For water and electric or just water?
Just water.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for just water, there's, um, the cash in the special deposits of roughly like 1.7 million. And then this fund temporarily invested, um, is 4.8 million.
Okay, so we're not depleting our fund completely from emergency needs by doing this project that we have to do because apparently animals want to ruin our water. Um, so I, I just wanted to confirm that we still have a sufficient amount in the water fund in case of emergency. Um, do we have a capital plan for the water department? I know we just finished, um, you know, we had a lot of projects going on in the past and everything, but, um, is there going to be a capital improvement plan coming up for the water department too? To use some of the funds that we have on hand?
Uh, we have a three, five and a 10-year capital plan for all of the companies. Um, when we get to the bonding in a little bit, you're going to see the next three years, three to five years projects, uh, listed on a, on a slide that's coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on these two items? We're going to move them separately, but as long as, as they are tied together, one is the engineering and one is the actual project. Any other questions on these? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to move the low lift pump station project to the mayor and council meeting of 2-1, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Depot, second from Counselor, uh, Stanford. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. The, I need a motion for the right lift, oh, right Pierce, low lift project engineering to move to the mayor and council meeting of 2-1, 2021.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Depot and a second from Counselor McCabe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Okay, Ron, uh, Basra Light and Power Electric Rate Schedule?
Um, I'm actually going to talk both rate schedules. Um, you can ask questions about them, but what we did for both Basra Light and Power and, uh, this was just approved by the Basra Light and Power Utility Commission, um, two hours ago. Um, so it was forwarded to you for consideration. Um, for, and for Groton Utilities, which was approved at last week's, uh, Groton Utility Meeting. Um, I believe some of you were present at the presentation of the cost of service study analysis. That was maybe three weeks, four weeks ago. Um, and what we did for both companies is we basically did not do rate increases. We did a rate redesign where we're increasing the meter service charges on both companies and lowering the embedded service charge within the kilowatt part of the rate. So the rate has a meter service charge and then an adder on it, which is X cents per kilowatt hour. We're lowering the X cents per kilowatt hour and we're raising the, uh, basic meter charge. Um, and what that does and the reason we're doing that is for fairness to the rate payers because it allows us to move the costs to the rate payers more accurately. Um, than what the current rate structure does. Uh, I can answer specific questions if there's any specific questions, but both rate actions are very similar.
Questions from the council on either Basra or the Groton Utilities electric rate schedules? Okay, seeing none? I need a motion to move the Basra Light and Power Electric Rate Schedule to the mayor and council meeting of 2-1, 2021.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Depot, second by Counselor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we need a motion to move Groton Utilities Electric Rate Schedule to the mayor and council meeting of 2-1, 2021.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Depot and a second by Counselor McCabe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carry. Okay, thank you, Ron. Uh, Ron Uhas, are we going to do the Groton Utilities financials? Are we going to skip that this, this month, uh, due to time?
I think due to time, we discussed, um, holding off on, on doing them. I think due to time, we discussed holding off on doing them. If there were specific questions, they could forward them to me. And then if we wanted to present, if they wanted to present it at the next committee, the whole, we'd go through it then. But to try to shorten the meeting a little bit.
Council, any objection to that? Okay, I don't see any. Then we will move to five fifty capital improvement projects and bonds. The first is a repurpose municipal bond for the Tyler House windows, municipal building, windows, doors and landing, police dive locker, asbestos abatement, fire department company one repaving and police locker rooms. Ron Yuhas, would you like to take the lead on this, please?
Sure. And all of these proposed bonds that we're bringing forward today, this first one being a repurpose, so it's not new money, it's money that was already, the debt was already issued and it's just sitting and we want to repurpose it so we can use it for these projects. But all of these have started over a year ago and the plan was in March to bring them to you. Some of them you have already seen, but with COVID and the executive orders, it kind of put a stop to these. So now with the new executive orders out and kind of working with bond council, we thought it was time that we could bring all of these to you for your consideration. So again, the first one, like the mayor mentioned, was for those projects we did in your package, we did have a public hearing already on this repurpose. That was back February eighteenth of two thousand and twenty. And the projects are all the same that were discussed at that point with the exception of part of the Tyler House bathrooms, office and hallway were done last season.
Questions from the council? Where are we? Was that Councilor Sheffield? Councilor Sheffield?
What's the total allocation of out of bond money? How much are we using for these projects?
We're looking to reallocate six hundred thousand.
And how much would be left over from that Colonel Ledgerd Bond?
Roughly eight hundred thousand approximately.
And we have it split up, you know, for each each project?
Correct. It's just one total coming to you. We were going off of quotes. Again, some of these quotes are a year, if not older than that. So it was kind of our best guess with the cost of things changing to move the six hundred thousand.
Now, this money again would have to go before the Freeman for final approval, correct?
Correct. It does need their approval to reauthorize it. But again, it's not new money. It's not a new borrowing.
Oh, yeah. I know for sure.
Any other questions on this? Ron, is this informing at this point or do we want to move this to a date?
I believe it will go, if they're all moved, we can start the process the first meeting of February for all of it, if they're all moved.
Okay, so you, so you want me to move, you want me to get a motion to move them to two one?
Yeah, and then if something does come up, we can address it at the two one meeting.
Got it. Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot, you had a comment before this?
If we have to get this approved by the Freeman, how are we planning to get that done?
We have to first vote on it, approve the budget of the amount that we're going to use, then there'll be a public hearing.
I know that, that's not what I meant.
Already had the public hearing.
I'm asking.
Deputy Mayor's Depot, I think your question is, how are we physically
Yes.
going to conduct the Freeman's meeting?
Yes, that's my question.
Your question. Okay, Ron, you want to take a shot at this?
Well, what we did was when we were working with bond council, based on the executive orders, it was their recommendation that it does still need to go to the Freeman meeting, similar to how the election was held last November. So we haven't really come up with a true, I guess, plan or how we're going to handle it. We're still going to be a month out from February. So that's something that we're going to work on internally to try to come up with procedurally, what the best, safest and easiest way to handle that is. So I don't have a great answer for you at this point as far as 100% how we're going to do it. But we're going to work with the mayor, the clerk, and try to come up with the best practice and safest procedure.
What, Deputy Mayor Depot, and council, one of the things that we talked about was holding the Freeman's meeting in the auditorium and being able to socially distance people and still meet the not only distancing requirement, but the numbers requirements from the current executive orders on how many people we can have inside. Typically, our Freeman's meetings, we can estimate, we can go back and look at what our Freeman's meeting and then estimate what we think the size might be. But that's one of the things that we're looking at. We also looked at if it's outside, if the weather's nice, maybe trying to do it outside. But being in New England, that has some potential drawbacks. But we are looking at methods of how we can do this and whether we do it with raises of hands or with votes where people can actually vote and put it in a box and then we count the votes and go that way. There are a couple of different ways that we're looking. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I was just going to say, I think, you know, with the setup that we have with Ledge Light doing the vaccinations in the municipal building, maybe we could use that space for, even if we had like a table where you check in and then a table where you get a paper that you can take notes on or whatever, and then have someone who can answer their questions and maybe not one at a time, but maybe groups of a couple who can stand six feet apart, like, you know, a few people at a time. And maybe we'd have to, we could do something like that, but you know, I think maybe stations where we could have, like that might be how we have to do it. That might work.
Well, and I'm also going to be talking to Clerk Patrick because she has experience in the way that we've done Freeman's meetings and votes in the past. So we are going, you know, we've, we've done some brainstorming sessions about how we can do this. We in the, if we would have done it, well, first of all, we couldn't do it during the COVID because it didn't meet the requirements. Right? This was not emergency. It wasn't COVID related, those kinds of things. During that period of time, we could have just brought it to the council and the approving body had the authorization to do that. We no longer have that ability to do that. And with these projects here, we felt that the Freeman might think that we were trying to pull one on them and trying to pull one over them and try to slide something by, which is absolutely not true. But there are those people that are out there that would float that theory. So we're now trying to determine how we're going to do the Freeman's meeting and how we'll make it successful here in the city. So we will keep you informed on how to do it, so it won't be a surprise. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I mean, I do think if, anyway, we can facilitate the opportunity for people to ask questions, even if that's, we, you know, tape a presentation in advance that we can play for people or something like that and have them bring their questions to the meeting instead of, you know, I know usually at the meeting, there's a presentation and people can ask questions and maybe we put the presentation out first to give people time to see it and then have them bring their questions. And then it'll be easier instead of having everyone in a whole group, someone could answer, you know, they could submit them or something like that. But I think definitely an opportunity for people to ask questions and get them answered before they have to vote. But I think I don't see any reason why we couldn't do like a paper vote. So it doesn't have to be everyone in one space raising their hands would be a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on this? Okay, then I need a motion. Ron, all these are going to be together, right? So I don't need to move them individually?
No, they will all be separate.
Oh, so I need to move Tyler House windows separate from?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, the repurpose is just one.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, then I need a motion to move the repurpose municipal bond to the mayor and council meeting of two one, two thousand and twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Depot and a second from Councilor McCabe. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Thank you. Basra Light and Power Bonding? Who wants to talk to this?
Mayor, I'll hit the head end of each of these and Ron can answer any questions on the money side. For Basra Light and Power, Groton Utilities Electric has to carry the bonding and the borrowing for Basra Light and Power. Back last February, the Utility Commission actually acted on and moved forward with bonding for the electric company, the water company and the sewer company. It took all the way till now to get these projects to move here. So for Basra, there's a five year capital plan, which was done in tandem with the cost of service studies. The plan is to spend about 1.2 million dollars a year on capital projects of which 650,000 dollars a year would basically be borrowed and bonded for cash flow purposes. In this project, as in the slide that you provided, will provide upgrades. This project will provide upgrades to the distribution system to include but not be limited to reconducting pole replacement and transformer upgrades for South Road, Route eighty two, Camp Moeen Road, Stockhouse Road, Red Cedar Lake and other portions of the Basra and Lebanon Service Territories. This includes various facility upgrades, engineering and administrative printing and legal and financial costs with this work. And the 4.25 million is estimated to cover the next five years for Basra Light.
Okay, questions on the Basra Light and Power Bonding, council? Anyone? Okay. I need a motion to move Basra Light and Power Bonding to the mayor and council meeting of two one, two thousand and twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Depot and a second by Councilor Stanford. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Groton Utilities Electric Transmission Bonding, Ron?
This project you've actually seen before once or twice. We've presented the entire electric transmission project to you and showed you that it was going to be 15.2 million dollars. You've approved purchase orders for engineering and certain other auxiliary costs related to this project. Since the city is going to bonding and to the Freeman meeting, we're moving this ahead at this point. If there's any questions specific to the project, please let me know. This is for all three transmission lines coming into Budington and an upgrade for the 400 line from 69,000 volts to 115,000 volts.
This is the ISO upgrade project that we talked about a couple of months ago.
Yes.
All right, are there any questions or comments from the council regarding Groton Utilities Electric Transmission Bonding? Okay, I need a motion to move Groton Utilities Electric Transmission Bonding to the mayor and council meeting of February first, two thousand and twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Depot and a second from Councilor McCabe. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Groton Utilities Water Bonding, Ron?
Along with the cost of service study that we did for the water company, the five year plan for capital spend had us borrowing about 7.4 million dollars for the next five years. The largest project in this bunch of projects is the replacement of the Brandig G AV stamp pipe right at the top of the hill. This bonding will also is anticipated to pay for the costs of that low lift pump station screening that will initially be paid for out of cash. Ron Yuhas allows us an 18 month look back for capital projects where we can actually bond and borrow that money back for the company. And then other projects are water main related, just to replace old and aged pipes in the distribution system.
Questions on Groton Utilities Water Bonding? Okay, I need a motion to move Groton Utilities Water Bonding to the mayor and council meeting of two one, two thousand and twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Depot, a second by Councilor McCabe. Are there any further discussions? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post, extension, motion carries. Okay, Groton Utilities Wastewater Bonding, Ron?
This is very similar discussion to the other ones. You have not seen this request before, but when we did the cost service study for the sewer company and came up with the five year financial plan, it had us borrowing a million dollars a year in capital projects to upgrade the wastewater plant and the collection system. So it's basically to replace sewer piping, pump station work and general upgrades at the wastewater plant itself.
Okay, comments on Groton Utilities Wastewater Bonding, council? All right, I need a motion to move Groton Utilities Wastewater Bonding to the council meeting of two one, two thousand and twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Depot. We have a second from Councilor Stanford. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post, extensions, motion carries. Okay, that is it for the council meeting. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Deputy, excuse me, Councilor McCabe, need a second?
Second.
Second from Councilor Stanford. We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post, extensions, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, council. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Deb, and thank you, Joe.